I have reconvened from closed session and I, there is nothing to report out, so I will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting at 6:18 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, June the 11th, 2025. The time is 6:18 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Tuesday, June 17th, at 9:00 AM and Wednesday, June 18th, at 6:00 PM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at www.eltgrove.gov or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I'll be moving into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robles.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
Everyone is present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would the Vice Mayor please assist?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plain Mewocks, who lived and sovereign caretakers for this land and these waterways since time memorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancherias Tribe, the only federalized recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endeared because of their bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite up a dear friend of the city of Elk Grove, former planning commissioner George Murphy. If you would please come forward and help lead the pledge this evening.
Thank you.
And over heart. Pledge.
Our pledge allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3, the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Item 4, or Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And pardon our workshop floor, but Item 4.1 is recognition of Eagle Force 2073 Robotics Team achieving second place at the 2025 First Robotics World Championship.
All right. We'd like to call you all forward. Our Pleasant Grove High School Eagle Force 2073 Robotics Team. And presenting the recognition is our Vice Mayor. He will read the covenants. Can all come forward? Come here towards the podium unless there's some robot in front. I can't see. All right. I figured as much. All right. All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, congratulations.
Yes.
Let's give another round of applause. All right. So I'll be reading the certificate of recognition. Eagle Force 2073 Robotics Team. Whereas in 1989 by inventor Dean Cameron, first, for inspirational and recognition of science and technology, is a global nonprofit organization that prepares young people for the future through a suite of inclusive team-based robotics program guided by signature sets of core values to conduct research, fundraise, design, build, showcase all of their achievements. Whereas in 2025, First Robotics World Champions took place in Houston, Texas, from April 16th through April 19th, 2025. Whereas in 2005, where Eagle Force 2073, the robotics team from Pleasant Grove High School and their alliance team, 1690 Orbit Israel, Team 44114, there's a lot of numbers here. School and their alliance, Team High Tide, Ventura, California, and Team 5166 Robotics Freelance, whoa, won the Johnson Division Championship and went on to second place overall in Worlds. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of Elk Grove hereby joins the community in recognizing the talented teamwork for our 2025 First Round Robotic Champions competitors, Eagle Force 2073, commending the coaches, families, teamwork members, display of collaborative spirit, building an international goodwill, as well as the ambassadors for their competitive form, fostering engineering inspiration through science, technology, and engineering mathematics, outreach, bringing new minds to the worlds of coding, robotics, and career paths. Signed this day, the 11th of June, 2025. Thank you.
Do we have some demonstrations or...? Yeah, go ahead. Take it from there. And if anyone wants to address the council, you are welcome to.
I think the robot's gonna take center stage for a little bit and everybody better stand back a little bit.
Can he come down there? I can't see anything from here.
It's gonna be a little loud and a little bit fun.
All right, I'm coming down there to see. Do you want to bring the recognition? We'll do it. We'll figure it out.
I think some of our maintenance staff fellow nervous there about job security.
What's up, guys? Hey, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Does this thing?
Thank you.
Do we want it to or do we need to?
Well, you have, there's a lot of you, so it can either be in the picture or we'll just work around.
I think we take it.
All right. It's not surprising.
Have it stand up. Go behind, have it stand up. We could be around it.
If it's, if it's stand.
I'm good where it's at. Let's help out around. All of you ready to stand here? Let's all, all right, we're gonna have this. All right, everyone just squeeze in and we're gonna look in the middle for the pictures. Okay, go. Yeah, that's good. If you wanna do that.
I can't see hers. I can't see you.
All right.
One, two, three.
All right, congratulations, everyone. Yes, yes, you are each and all to come over here and address us. Just give us a few seconds to give a background.
We're coming with the saw blade. That's the one I want to do.
All right, who wanted to speak? Yep, go ahead and come forward.
Is it on? So, a little bit on our team, we started in 2007 with around eight members and now we've grown to be around a 30 to 40 member team. And we originate in Pleasant Grove High School. So, you mentioned first, and first has different things. Their goal is to spread STEM education from K to 12. And we do their highest level of competition, which is First Robotics Competition. And through that, to get to Worlds first, you have to compete in different regionals. So we competed in three regionals and the regional we actually won an award to, to go to Worlds, was actually right here in our school. So we hold one of the regionals called Sacramento Regional, and during that regional, we won the Engineering Inspiration Award. Engineering Inspiration Award is an award that congratulates or awards a team that has given the most back to their community. And we've done that through multiple of our programs. We try to spread STEM, not only by building our robot, but also give children or people who don't have that advantage to learn about STEM, a chance to learn about STEM. And we do that through our summer camps, our different programs for mobility inclusion, for lower income, and other, just going to community events. And through that, we won the Engineering Inspiration Award. From that, we went on to compete at Worlds, and he'll tell you a little bit about that.
Yeah, so at World Championships, like you said, there are around 600 teams spread across eight divisions. So each division is held a little bit like a regional competition with two days of qualifying matches and then half a day for playoffs dedicated to each division. And the playoffs are a double elimination style, and we made our way all the way through the playoffs on the first seed alliance to win our division and go on to compete against the winners of the other seven divisions at World Championships, ultimately finishing as finalists. And we played a total of three matches. They're best out of three, so we did take them to a tiebreaker. We went down fighting. And it was really amazing. There were around 30,000 people watching our one field, us competing. It was a really amazing experience.
Well done, everyone.
Mayor, may I say?
Yeah, please.
So I also want to offer my congratulations and, you know, it's really inspiring to see this because, love him or hate him, Elon Musk talked about, everybody's gonna have a personal robot one day. And when you see things like this and the work that you're doing at a high school level, I started to believe it. And frankly, I think any of us over a certain age could use the help, so please keep up the great work.
Congratulations, everyone. That is tremendous.
Yeah, congrats. Thank you.
Tremendous. All right, let's give a minute here to clear the robot. Okay, robot's gone. All right. We are back in business here. All right, next up is our recognition of City of Elk Grove Budget Essay Contest winners, presented by the Finance Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. As you know, I am not the Finance Department. I am Crystal Love-Lazard. I am your Community Engagement and Government Relations Program Manager. I will ask Nathan to come join me. So this item is a joint effort between the City Managers Department and the Finance Department in our ongoing and ever-spirited way to find creative ways to engage our community around municipal finance. So to continue the theme of excellent high school students and to preview tonight's theme of municipal budgets, I want to invite up Michael Guandaku and Shane Mayo York. Michael's from Elk Grove High School, Shane is from Franklin High School, and these two are the winners of our first-ever Budget Essay Contest. So they had the task of filling in, "If I was city manager, what would my budget priorities be?" And it required them to deep dive into our municipal finance documents and also introspect about young leaders and what they would like to see in their community and what improvements they would like to see. So we are very proud of the essays and proud of the effort, and so they are receiving certificates and will receive a cash prize. So this is very exciting for us. Nathan, are you...? Nathan? Okay, and I would invite you to come down and take a photo with them as well. So, yeah, come on down. Do a photo. Are you sure you don't want to say anything? Okay. They have decided not to talk today.
What have they decided not to do?
To talk.
Oh, you don't want to talk. Okay. Well, I decided that I have. I want to know more about the essays.
Oh, then, I mean, you could ask questions.
There's my question. So if you could just give me just a few sentences.
Bear, do you want to be in the middle?
It's fine. Thank you. Congratulations. Just stay right there.
Oh, yeah, you guys are gonna have to talk.
Just talk a little bit about your essay. You don't have to say a lot, but just, what did you capture, so that we know what we can do better.
Congratulations.
Do you want me to stay with you? You're okay. Okay, you're gonna stand here and just speak.
Okay.
Do you want to go first, Michael?
So my priority, when I talked about if I were city manager, was focusing more on working with traffic safety and pedestrian safety. So, as I said, I attend Elk Grove High School and I'm part of the Student Equity Council. And what we're focusing right now on is working on different ways to promote pedestrian safety, not only for students at our school, but for people that live in the city of Elk Grove.
Great, what a great concept. We definitely need that.
And I worked on building the Elk Grove City Hospital and focusing on the mental health aspect of it and how it should not consider their income, but it should consider what health they need.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, good job, both of you. Very impressive. All right, next up is a proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth, and there are two recipients, so I would like to call you forward. Of course, no stranger to Elk Grove, Dr. Tekoi Porter, please come forward. And then also, new to all of us, to the Sisters of Nia, if you can also come forward. And Rod's gonna read a little bit about both of you.
So I want to congratulate the both of you for receiving this honor this year. The work that both of you have done throughout the community for several years now, Sisters of Nia is not new to Elk Grove, but for our radar screen, it is new because of the work that you're doing, people, the eyes of the community are starting to pay attention, and it's been positive and very fruitful. And for Dr. Reverend Tekoi Porter, you and I are no strangers of doing good work here in town, especially in the space of equity. And I definitely commend you for your work as the Sacramento Chapter President of the National Action Network. That has definitely grown, not only in presence, but importance to all of our community here, not just in Elk Grove, but the Sacramento region. And wanted to read a little bit of an excerpt or a little bit of information on the Sisters of Nia program, because you were established in 2009 and you're a community-based nonprofit organization centered around the one of the principles of Nguzo Naye, the eight principles known as Nia, which means purpose. Nguzo Naye are Kishwali terms representing eight core values of African culture that foster community and cultural identity amongst African Americans. Your organization aims to empower adolescent girls through the culturally relevant and educational programs that promote social skills, leadership development, and academic achievement. And the organization's mission is to inspire, motivate, and support girls in reaching their full potential and living purposefully. The program spans three years and addresses different developmental aspects of adolescent girls from sixth through eighth grades, with each year dedicated to a specific focus area. And that's important because as young girls grow into young women, into adolescents, these are very core things that women would need to have so they could be brave, confident, and focused in taking on this society with a great degree of self-esteem. The curriculum is designed to provide supportive nurturing and empowering lessons rooted in Afrocentric principles, encouraging girls to pursue their goals with confidence and intention. And there's a lot of good stuff in addition to what you are doing, when that's combined with all the efforts going on through all of our leaders throughout this region, because leadership comes in a lot of different forms. But the two of you are definitely in that driver's seat in terms of being strong, positive leaders for all of our communities. So we both have you both for resolutions. Each of the resolutions are identical, but I wanted to give this extra part to recognize each of you for your separate but very conjoined traits that brought you, that is bringing you here today to be honored. So whereas on September 22nd, 1862, the Emancipation Proclamation and Executive Order were issued by President Abraham Lincoln declaring the owning of slaves to be illegal effective January 1st, 1863. And whereas almost two and a half years later, June 19th, 1865, Union troops arrived in Galveston, Texas, bringing news of the proclamation and executive order that slaves should be freed. And whereas June 19th, Juneteenth, is a holiday commemorating the liberation of African Americans attained by the African American community's perseverance and innovation despite the perils faced, coupled with the proclamation and its executive order outlawing slavery. And whereas today, Juneteenth celebrates African American resilience and achievement with the principles of self-determination, citizenship, and democracy. And whereas numerous residents, organizations, and businesses within the city of Elk Grove have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to promoting the ideals of Juneteenth through education, advocacy, and cultural celebrations, thus promoting a more inclusive and equitable community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Elk Grove, hereby affirms and proclaims June 19th as Juneteenth in the city of Elk Grove and recognizes the many residents, organizations, and businesses of Elk Grove who are committed to fairness and justice, and encourages all residents to foster a community that continues to advance the movement towards equality and justice for African American people, signed on this day, the 11th day of June, 2025. So congratulations once again for the two of you, and thank you for everything that you do for all of us here.
The floor is yours, both of you.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for this honor. This is my first time ever coming to a city council meeting, and I've been living in Elk Grove since 2020.
Okay.
So this won't be my last time. On behalf of our Board of Directors and the girls that are in our program, we are graciously honored to accept this recognition. We have been around since 2009, but we just started meeting with a cohort in Elk Grove two years ago. So we're really excited to be in Elk Grove. My, excuse me, my goal was to be able to expand. When we started in 2009, was to not just be in one location, but to be able to expand and be able to service as many girls as we can. So we came to Elk Grove with welcoming arms. We're looking forward to our third year here, and we're just honored and humbled to be able to be present in Elk Grove. So thank you so much for the recognition once again.
Thank you.
Well, I want to also thank you all, Mayor, and members of the city council here for bestowing this honor upon us. I stand honored to be able to stand with our sister here, Sisters of Nia, right, to represent, to receive this proclamation on behalf of the community that we both serve. You know, Juneteenth represents more than just a day in history, but it's a powerful affirmation of dignity, freedom, and the relentless pursuit of justice. And so this proclamation not only commemorates the moment when the last enslaved African Americans learned of their freedom, but it also inspires us to continue to strive for a society where every individual is respected and empowered. My hope is that this proclamation serves as a call to action and as a reminder that the work of freedom is never finished. And it's our collective responsibility to build bridges, advocate for equity, and nurture a future where justice prevails for all of us. Thank you again for this honor and for honoring us. I want to thank my family for coming out, my church family and such. It's always a humbling opportunity to be recognized by you all. Thank you.
I would be remiss, I would be remiss in not acknowledging Reverend Porter for the work that he has done, not only with Genesis Church in Sacramento, but also through his school that he has on the site of Genesis Church. South Sacramento and Elk Grove is connected, and your leadership for that school, you and Ms. Carlett, has meant so much to the good people of Meadowview, but also for the families in Elk Grove who do have kids that go to your school. And that is greatly to be commended. And also with the work that we have been doing over the last few years with the MLK Breakfast, that has been a very moving experience, not just for us, the council, but really for the community, because it gives people an option, an avenue, a place to go the Saturday before Dr. King's birthday, to really embrace and acknowledge not only the work that Dr. King is doing, but also to really develop this sense of community and reflect and give another call to arms for being in the moment and working towards equality and justice. So because of that, I definitely want to thank you for that, because you bring in the light in making this possible and making this now an annual event and working with the city of Elk Grove is truly, truly remarkable feat, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah. So the Sisters of Nia are definitely new for me, and so I'm looking forward to getting to know you better and the organization and participating. And just reading a little bit about you within the brochure, what you're doing is just tremendous work, uplifting the community and helping young girls. So I commend you for the work that you're doing, and I look forward to being a part of this. And invite you to be a part of the MLK Breakfast, too. So as the coordination and planning begins, please reach out to them as well so that they can have a sense of ownership of this great annual event that takes place on the weekend prior to Martin Luther King's birthday.
You were reading my mind.
We all always need more volunteers. And then to you, Dr. Porter, thank you again. You know, I just love coming and visiting you at the Genesis Church, no stranger to the work that you're doing, particularly with the NAN Action, the Action Network as well. It's a joy to be at the conference and being one of your guest speakers. So just keep up the great work that you're doing. It takes a village, and you are a tremendous component of that greater village. Thank you again so much. We're gonna come down and present this to you, but we do have a public comment, so, and I know that she's got wonderful things to say, so I will invite up Tina Lee Voat.
Good evening. I just wanted to say on behalf of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, thank you again, council, for recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth. I really want to thank our committee for working on the proclamation that you had before you, and thank these organizations for the wonderful work that they do in our community. And we look forward to partnering with them, not only on MLK Breakfast and Juneteenth, but on so many other events that we have happening throughout the year. So thank you so much for the recognition that you shared with these great community organizations.
Thank you, Tina. All right, let's come down now. All right, let's come down now. A pleasure meeting you. Thank you. Good to see you, sir. All right, next up is our proclamation recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. And this will be presented to the members of our Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And reading the proclamation will be Councilmember Darren Soon. So I'd like to invite up the commission.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Nice to see you all. Thank you so much for all that you do in the community as well. And it's my honor to present this proclamation for LGBTQIA Pride Month, June 2025. I can just want to quickly say that we we say this often and we mean it. We are a city inclusive to all and the LGBTQIA community is interwoven into the fabric of our community. And most importantly, I feel about this particular Pride Month is that when we talk about the LGBTQIA community, I I really have in mind our children, our children feeling safe in our community, knowing that they can always be themselves and embracing, you know, embracing children for who they are and meeting them where they are. And as a parent myself who who've had that experience raising someone in that community, I know that firsthand how important that is. So it's it's my honor to present this. Whereas the City of Elk Grove strives to be an inclusive community that embraces their rich diversity, that makes Elk Grove a wonderful community to live, work and play in. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex and asexual LGBTQIA+ individuals have made important and lasting contributions to our country, state and city. And the City of Elk Grove celebrates the contributions that LGBTQIA+ residents make to Elk Grove's economic, cultural and social life. And whereas LGBTQIA+ friends, allies, local organizations and faith communities show considerable support to the LGBTQIA+ community, thereby making Elk Grove a more inclusive place for LGBTQIA+ residents. And whereas each year, June 28 marks the anniversary of the Stonewall riots that gave birth to the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement in the United States. And whereas Pride Month seeks to increase the visibility, activism, acceptance and education of all gay and gender variant people, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of June 2025 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Elk Grove and urges all residents to join in celebrating the culture, accomplishments and contributions that the LGBTQIA+ people and encourages all residents to help advance the cause for equality for LGBTQIA+ people and their families. Congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I think one of the things that we are so proud of in terms of being part of this commission is being part of a city that not only talks about being support and being a city welcome to all, but really demonstrating it. As you know, we're probably one of the few cities within the region that raises the flag every year. And I think it's really important to have that visibility for the community because it really shows how welcome and how the city really stands behind those words that they say. I think as we look at what's going on right now, especially in our nation, it's a community under attack. It's a community that doesn't feel safe. So the words that you said and the words that you said in your opening statement are really true. It's really important to make sure that we do whatever we can. So as we celebrate this month, we have to remember how important it is to continue fighting for their rights because it's not just equal rights, it's human rights and it's being able to make sure that people always feel welcome, they always feel safe and they always know that they're an important part of our community. I'd like to recognize my other commissioners that are up with me. Carlys Laurent is one of our new members, Jessica Carter, Vice Chair, Britt Burfield, one of our members, and then our newest member, Teresa Steffi. And I just think that we have such an amazing commission and group of folks that are so committed to making sure that the community feels welcome. And so I want to see if there's any other commissioner that wants to speak or say anything. So.
I'll say a little bit.
Okay.
Model choked up, so I'll try to cut through this quick. I came across a post recently on LinkedIn and it said, having one accepting adult in an LGBTQ plus young person's life reduces their suicide risk by 40%. So be that adult. I believe that as a city and you as leadership, we are those adults. The gestures that we have made as a city by hosting the the pride flag or even honoring pride tonight or even participating in the parade on Sunday, these are all gestures that will have ripple effects and these ripple effects turn into waves of change. I had a lot more to say, but thank you for being a part of that current because there's so many people who don't live out loud. We come from different backgrounds, different cultures where we hope to just wear a pin and hope that we can make some sort of difference. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say. I want to say thank you. Whether you agree with the queer community or not, just to be human goes a far a long way. So thank you.
Thank you.
She is always a tough act to follow. I just want to be brief and just saying thank you. Just I'm sure everybody's seen my Facebook posts earlier this month, just about raising a flag and things like that. I got a lot of feedback and there was a lot of people who I didn't expect who want to be part of that next year. They were very intrigued. So even to go along with the State of the City address yesterday, we're just getting started. When it comes to Pride Month, I feel like we're just getting started as well because there's a lot of people who want to get behind this and I feel like we're right on time and this city is growing in more ways than one and I'm excited and it's great to hear from you and like when Mayor was talking at the event, a lot of people until it hits home, it doesn't bother you. Then you find out your nephew's gay, your daughter's gay, your son's gay, and then it's like, oh, now we have to deal with it. You never know who's around you that's dealing with it, so it's better to get on board and help as much as you can. So if it does hit you, when it does hit you, you'll be aware and you know how to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. You know, it was really important to, and I thank all of you for the work that you've done, helping draft the resolution, but also working on helping us raise the progress pride flag every June. I know that this, you know, this wasn't always the case, but we have made tremendous progress as a city and we are truly highlighting the fact that we are a beautifully diverse community and a city welcome to all. It's like you said, Tina, it's not just in the words, it's in the actions. And just know that your mayor and your city council stand with you. We see you, we love you and we celebrate you, not just this Pride Month, but every single day, 365 days a year. This is your city and we have you.
Thank you so much.
This is not easy right now and I know. I have family, friends, I have close friends that are suffering. And so it was even more important this year than years past. So we have to show strength and resilience, love and compassion for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we will come down there.
Hi, Darren.
Hi. Good to see you.
You too.
Hi.
Who am I supposed to give this to? Are you taking?
No, I care. Let's all gather around. I'm gonna squeeze in right here. All right, let's do this. All right, next up is our public comment. At this time, I will go ahead and open up public comment opportunity. We have three people sign up to speak. We will start with George Murphy, followed by Bonnie Stensler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you again. I brought with me tonight a compilation of over 20 vision and policy statements taken directly from the general plan, along with page, chapter and page numbers. I provide those those references so you can look them up as you study for a controversial project coming up that's located in a rural area. The project, of course, is summer villages. It's located within the rural area. And if approved, this project will remove a portion, 116 acres from the rural area. It will be it will become the proverbial camel's nose and it will be sending a signal that the rural area is up for development. However, I'm not here to talk about that guy tonight. I'm here to remind you of the more than 20 years the city has supported the rural area. During my 17 years on a planning commission, I sat with many former and two current council members and many planning commissioners in workshops and vetting, shaping and adopting policies that protect, promote, protect and promote the rural area. These policies didn't magically appear on a piece of paper. Citizens working cooperatively cooperatively with staff spent countless hours in workshops vetting the proposed language, policy language, supported by the planning commission and ultimately adopted by the city council. These policies aren't just words. They're an attempt to provide a picture of the rural area. It's a portrayal using planning language, but you have to live it to truly understand what these words mean to the to the people that live in the rural area. Each of you have a copy of that list of policies and visions provided tonight. That's it. Thank you, Darren. I didn't save myself a copy. You have been or will be hearing from the two organizations that advocate for the rural area. My hope is each of you will also hear from folks within your respective districts of their support for the rural area. Each of you have expressed both in public meetings and in conversation with me, your support for the rural area. Supporting the rural area means many things, but the support begins by honoring the boundaries of the rural area as established in the general plan. To paraphrase former council member Cooper, I get it, hands off the rural area. As you read through the policy and vision statements provided, let your heart, your conscience and your very words, along with the words enshrined in the general plan, guide your decision-making process. I thank you for your time.
Wow, that was incredible. Three minutes on the dot.
That's unusual, by the way.
Yes, I've had coffee with you many times. All right, next up is Bonnie Stensler, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, police chief. I was present yesterday when you delivered your State of the City address at District 56. And I just wanted to say that the content and the format was absolutely outstanding. The whole program was. Elk Grove is truly a wonderful place to live, work and raise a family. Need the glasses. I myself moved here 10 years ago to be from San Francisco to be closer to my family. For me, it's been a great place to retire, that's so to speak, because I'm also one of many active residents at Del Webb Glenbrook. And we enjoy a healthy relationship with this council, the city staff. You're all very responsive to us. Sergio came out and spoke to our coffee class group. Darren has been out. I've reached out to Darren. I'll make sure I reach out to the rest of you too, one-on-one. But you're very responsive to our community. We value all of the, all of you. City staff, there's a change in staff. The new staff person, the old staff person tells the new staff person, they send me an email, I know who to contact. You really, you know, go the extra mile and we're looking forward to maintaining a great relationship with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's hear our final speaker is Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. It is because of the people that live here, that I live here. And I, of course, bring up different points of view and opinions that aren't necessarily liked or appreciated, but it all comes from my heart and a place of caring about not just now, but about the future. I was once told I didn't have a life because I spent so much time here and reading reports and speaking up. Well, it is my life and just as George mentioned, the rural area, I too want that rural area preserved and have often been in the fight to try to keep that rural. But I also was in a fight for another area, SEPA. So in 2007, the developers were looking at planning that area. It was just a planning area and idea at that time. And of course, the economy was such, it didn't go anywhere. The city in 2012 decided to begin master planning that area. In 2014, after much master planning, that area was adopted and staff was directed to plan the infrastructure. The infrastructure, which most of it was front-loaded by the the current and previous Elk Grove taxpayers. That was funding for the infrastructure that was going to develop our employment area, which by one previous mayor was promised to bring 25,000 jobs. So as the city was deciding, our our previous mayors and council members were deciding on how to develop the area, this, you know, job employment center, guess what? The taxpayers paid for the first 500 homes to go into that area. So we get 500 homes, we don't get any new jobs and since then, it has been amended numerous times with the city choosing to purchase 100 acres in that area. So here we are, it's a moving target that we continue to pay for. Now, who's benefiting? Not the taxpayer, it's the developers and investors who keep telling certain individuals that they can't afford to build something unless we give it to them for practically nothing. So it is the taxpayers of now and the taxpayers in the future that will continue to pay for the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude our public comment. So I will go ahead and close that and move on to our next agenda item, which is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Bearman, your city manager. Several items to report on this evening. First of all, applications for our fall, a 25 cohort at Elk Grove 101, which we just completed the third cohort, so this will be our fourth one. We're accepting applications through July 8th. Program Officer Immersive Eight Session Course in Elk Grove's local government that is open to anyone age 18 and older who lives or works in Elk Grove. Group will meet on Tuesday nights at District 56, starting in mid-August. Get more information or to sign up and apply at the city's website. Consumed as Fire Department and Elk Grove Police and Code Enforcement Departments have teamed up to host a fireworks amnesty event in advance of our Fourth of July celebration on Saturday, June 21st, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. at Fire Station 71, which is on 8760 Elk Grove Boulevard. Whether they are legal or not, residents can bring in fireworks for safe disposal. No fines, no trouble, no questions asked. This event is one of several strategies deployed over the coming works to reduce fire danger, protect Elk Grove homes and keep our summer celebrations safe. Applications for the Fourth Annual Pitch Elk Grove Startup Competition are officially open. This event has become a cornerstone of Northern California's innovation scene, offering a chance for entrepreneurs to compete for $20,000 in prize money and to connect with investors, mentors and broader business community. If you or someone you know has a startup that is ready to shine, encourage them to apply before June 23rd. More information can be found on our website. City staff is preparing to launch the city's 25th anniversary pop-up shop next month and we're bringing a sneak peek to the next city council meeting. The pop-up shop will be set up for the first time in the parking lot, right outside the council chambers on June 21st. council chambers on June 25th, offering early access to limited edition Elk Grove merchandise. So get your branded gear before the meeting and show your city pride all summer long. The Animal Services Team will host a quarterly drive-through vaccine clinic on Saturday, June 14th, from 8 to 11, at the animal shelter. Residents can have their cats and dogs vaccinated and microchipped for free during the event. Appointments are required and can be scheduled on the city's website at elkrove.gov. And finally, applications to fill six vacancies on the Elk Grove Youth Commission will be accepted through next Wednesday, June 18th. Details can be found on the Commissions and Committees section of the city's webpage. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you for your report. One comment on the youth commission. Can we make sure that the Fortune School is aware of it and has the information? I would love to get a representative from there, if possible. All right, thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item, and that is our consent calendar items. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I have one speaker lined up for item 7.6, Lynn Wheat.
The city's decision to let the developers off the hook on installing the Purple Pipe in SEPA is just another instance of helping support minimal developer fees so they can maximize their profits on home sales. While the staff report cites the cost increase that would eventually be passed on to the buyers, the bottom line is developers don't want to take a chance in a slowing competitive housing market with additional upfront costs. Once again, the conservation policies of the general plan take a backseat to the almighty dollar. I saw the Public Works Director interviewed by the Channel 13 News earlier this evening, and in some twisted way, this story is being presented as a favor to save taxpayers' money. Well, the slow drip of increasing water bills they will face each year by irrigating their yards with our drinking water will help guys the real truth. Water is gold and developers are golden. I can hardly wait to see the reaction of these rescued taxpayers when they find out they will be drinking recycled sewage water in the not-too-distant future, when all the city annexations and continuing rooftops and retail development occur. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final speaker for our consent calendar items. Looking for a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move consent, but I just, there was some confusion about item 6.6. I just wanted to address.
Item which one?
7.6, the one the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a CBS article that also conflated it with the Harvest Water Project, so I wanted to ask Mr. Warner to maybe clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the SEPA Recycled Water Initiative is something that the city elected to try and move forward with, and we're working on developing the infrastructure plan for the system. The system would have been paid for through development fees, and in no way is the cancellation of the project been requested by developers or as a favor to developers, so I'll make that very clear as well. It was also never contemplated as being necessary or part of the Harvest Water Project. That is a completely separate initiative. The Harvest Water Project would have been provided source water for the system in SEPA. It will still provide source water for the system that exists today in, in East Franklin and the balance of Laguna Ridge, which is known as the Phase Two area for recycled water. Phase One is Laguna West, which already has recycled water source and purple pipe in the ground and is being, landscape is being irrigated with recycled water today. And so, yeah, the, it was fortunate that the Harvest Water Project would have had enough capacity to serve the SEPA area, but due to the reasons listed in the staff report, that, that project is really no longer practical in terms of a cost-benefit comparison at this time.
So we still have Purple Pipe in Laguna Ridge, East Franklin, which is about 77 homes in Laguna Ridge, 10,000 homes in East Franklin, and then all of Laguna, Laguna West has it as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
And for the record, are, are our residents at risk of drinking recycled sewer water?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, I just wanted to ask. All right, so we have a motion?
Yep.
I have a second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That'll take us to Section 8, our public hearings. And the first public hearing is item 8.1, which is a public hearing to receive information from staff and comments from the public regarding residential solid waste service rates for fiscal year 2025, 2026. This is the first of two hearings, so you'll get to hear this one again as we come back to our second meeting in June.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and members of the city council. My name is Kimberly Taylor, and I manage the Recycling and Waste Division within the Public Works Department. The item I am presenting before you tonight is a public hearing to consider a resolution setting residential solid waste service rates for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And as mentioned, this is the first of two public hearings, so I'll be presenting tonight, then you'll see me back again in two more weeks, on June 25th, doing the same presentation again for that public hearing. There we go. Residential solid waste services in the city of Elk Grove are provided through an exclusive franchise agreement with Republic Services. As part of this exclusive franchise agreement, Republic Services is entitled to an annual adjustment in their rates in, in accordance to changes in the Consumer Price Index. So an increase in the CPI would reflect costs for solid waste services related to labor, fuel, landfill fees and regulatory fees. This is a 10-year contract, and so each year you see me back, talking about that annual adjustment in accordance with the CPA, CPI, excuse me. Over the last 12 months, the Consumer Price Index for garbage and trash collection increased 4.46% according, according to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. It's worth noting that this is a CPI subcategory, so the overall CPI is 2.9, but it's slightly separate for the category specifically of garbage and trash collection. The city's contract with Republic Services states that the annual rate adjustment be capped at 3%, however, which is the rate increase staff are going to be proposing in this year's public hearings. Since the CPI for garbage and trash collection over the past year exceeded 3%, excuse me. The proposed 3% rate increase would affect all trash can sizes available to Elk Grove residents and will be detailed in a table on the next slide. The city's admin fee would also be adjusted 11 cents in accordance with that 3% increase to go from $3.64 to $3.75 per service account. The table you're seeing on the slide now shows what that, what that 3% increase would look like for different customers. So for example, on the third line down where it says 64 gallon refuse cart, this is the most commonly used size in Elk Grove. The current rate is $35.48. A 3% increase would increase that by $1.06 per month to a total cost of $36.40, $36.54, excuse me. And you can see the same, all of the different service levels are detailed here. Residents can elect to have a smaller cart if they're creating less garbage, a 32 gallon cart. They can elect to have a larger cart, 96 gallons, or any combination of different size carts. And so that 3% increase would apply to all of those different cart sizes. It's worth noting that recycling and organics collection are built into the trash cart, and so all residents receive up to three organics carts and up to three recycling carts with no additional fee. So fees on those, on those diverted materials does not increase at all. It's just for garbage. It's also worth noting that for residents who are already on the city's Lifeline Assistance Program and already receive a 20% discount, while this 3% increase does still apply to that resident, those residents and those households, their rates are already lower. So their rates, if it's a household, for example, that has the 64 gallon cart, the typical size, those households currently pay $28.39 per month if they're on the Lifeline Assistance Program, and with the 3% increase, that would go up 84 cents to a monthly cost This graph shows you that with this rate, proposed rate increase, the average local rate in the region is still significantly higher than in Elk Grove. You'll see that the average local rate in the region is $44.21 for comparable services. In Elk Grove, this rate increase would take us up to $36.54, which you can still see is the second lowest. Citrus Heights is the only jurisdiction in the region that has a lower rate than that. And I'll add that that includes the Special Waste Collection Center and the amenities that residents receive by being able to safely dispose of HHW for free in a really convenient way and to dispose of excess recycling. The annual residential solid waste rate increase must follow the procedural requirements of Proposition 218, which dictates the fees for refuse collection services be noticed no less than 45 days of the posted hearing happening this evening. During the last week of April, in accordance to Prop. 218, 55,249 notices were mailed to all residential solid waste service property owners and bill receivers detailing the proposed rate increase and providing notice of tonight's hearing. That table you saw before was included on that mailer. A second notice was mailed to the same recipients during the second week of May, providing the required 45-day notice to the hearing on June 25th. Two public hearing notices were also published in the local newspaper. For a majority protest to exist under Prop. 218, written protests must exceed 50% of the parcels impacted by the fee. The city has approximately 50,000 parcels or residential service addresses, which means that approximately 25,000 written protests would be required to halt the rate proceedings. My most recent update from the city clerk was that the city has received 43 protests, which does not meet the threshold for a majority protest. This image on the slide now is showing what the mailer looked like that went out to residents. You can see it includes that same table on the front, and then on the back, it has information about ADA compliance, about Prop. 218, and about where to get more information about the rate increase. As tonight is the first of two public hearings for the residential solid waste rate increase for fiscal year 2025, 2026, no action is called for during this council meeting. I'll return, as I said, on June 25th for the second public hearing, and at that time will recommend to the city to adopt the resolution setting residential solid waste service rates for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your thorough presentation. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. We have two people signed up to speak. We'll start with Norman Tanaka, followed by Rosalinda, oh, Pagergan, and I'm sure you'll correct me.
I think she left, so don't worry, it's just me.
Okay, Norman, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here. I'm a proud resident of Elk Grove, I just want to tell you that. Kids went to school, so no beef against anything about Elk Grove, but I'm also a homeowner and a taxpayer too, and I just want to know, I'm retired, so I pay P. Ginni, and their rates just went up. I pay SMUD, their rates went up, and then I'm going to be paying Elk Grove, and nothing wrong with that, it's just that now I just see this, and it's a minimal amount, so I'm not arguing about that. All I'm asking is, at this time, due to the unstable economy that's happening, I'm just requesting that the increase is capped. It doesn't go up year by year by year, because that's what's happening to the others, and that's all I'm asking for. What you're doing, I can live with, but what I can't accept is that it goes up again next year and again next year. That's all I'm requesting, so thank you for having the compassion and empathy just to listen and to be transparent, so thank you.
Good to see you, Norman.
Mr. Tanaka?
Yes.
Oh, no, thank you. I was just thinking.
I just said, good to see you, Norman.
Yeah, good, thank you very much.
Rosalinda, I just, for the record, Rosalinda is not here? Rosalinda, if you're outside, you have five seconds. All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Questions, comments from council? I'll start to the right, anything?
I do, actually. So I was surprised this didn't come up, but Mr. Berman, if you could explain a little bit, or, I'm sorry, the, our presenter, if you could discuss a little bit what Lifeline is about, and perhaps, maybe next year, we could put that on the mailer for those who may need that assistance. And so, just for, just for the record, if anybody's listening, they probably aren't, well, let's put it on the record what Lifeline is and how folks can get assistance if they need it.
Absolutely. Can you hear? Absolutely. Thank you for asking for that. The Lifeline Rate Assistance is a program that the city offers that provides eligible residents 20% off of their service bill, and so eligibility is based on income. The city of Elk Grove's program is based on SMUD's Income Assistance Program, and so if residents have enrolled in SMUD's Income Assistance Program, they automatically are qualified for income assistance through Elk Grove. And so this is a program that we're working on advertising more widely in the coming years to make sure residents are aware of this opportunity.
Perfect. And then my suggestion is maybe we can put it on the mailer next year. Cool. I like that idea.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people know about it.
No, I, I didn't. I just remember the presentation we had had a couple of weeks back and, all right? Thank you.
I agree. Any other questions? Looking to the left, questions, comments, anything? All right, I definitely echo the same sentiments as Councilmember Spees. You had a question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Could you just, sorry, review one more time for me on the, the rate increases? Do we, for, for the, the term of the franchise agreement, do we, is there a cap?
Yes, so the language. The language in the franchise agreement, it's a 10-year contract, and the language in the agreement clearly states that Republic Services is entitled to a rate adjustment each year, thus why you see me each year in June.
Yeah.
And that adjustment is based on CPI. So if the CPI has gone up, we will raise the rates up to 3%. So 3% is the highest that it can be raised. So in years where we have a CPI above 3%, the rates do not get raised. 3% is the cap.
Right, thank you very much.
Let me just add to that real quick, just so that everyone's clear, and it's, the bottom is 2%, right? So the, the rate increase will always be between 2 and 3%. And if, for example, this year, the CPI is, is above 3% at, you know, for almost four and a half, and so it's part of the negotiation in the 10-year franchise agreement, that, that rate is, is capped at 3%. If it drops below 2%, Republic Services would then, would then be bottomed out at 2%, I guess.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. So there's no motion for this. We look forward to your next presentation. Thank you. All right, next item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. Joseph Dagman, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. Item 8.2 this evening is the Calvine Point Shop 6 Amendment Project. This project consists of a design review amendment to the previously approved Calvine Point project, which was approved by the city council in 2005. This project involves the construction of a one-story commercial building totaling approximately 10,752 square feet. This project will be subject to the city's Climate Action Plan measures for non-residential The project site is located at 8854 Calvine Road, within the Calvine Road, Calvine Point Shopping Center, near the southwest corner of Calvine Road and Elk Grove Floren Road. The shopping center is comprised of seven parcels totaling approximately 22.3 acres and is developed with a Kohl's, Bank of America, El Pollo Loco, Island Pacific Supermarket, City Sports Club and one multi-tenant building. There are currently two vacant pads on site, which is the, the project site, which is outlined in the light blue, as well as the parcel right here. And then there is an Arco AM PM that's currently under construction just north of the existing Kohl's. The project site will occur on approximately 0.54 acres of the 7.13 acre parcel within the shopping center. In terms of surrounding uses, the project site and the shopping center include retail to the east, single, single residential units and a vacant city-owned parcel to the south, a Buddhist temple to the west, and then properties to the north are within the Sacramento County jurisdiction. They include future retail, a single-family resident, single-family residential uses and a vacant parcel. Little bit of background, the full background information on the shopping center is detailed in your staff report. I'll just go through this relatively quickly. So as I mentioned, the Calvine Point Shopping Center was originally approved in 2005. It included a design review for, for the development of approximately 250,000 square feet. Shop 6, which is outlined in red on your screen, was initially approved for an approximately 9,355 square foot commercial building. Fast forwarding to the most recent amendment for Calvine Point, this was approved by the city council back in 2019. Shop 6, the developer decided to change Shop 6 to a 3,200 square foot restaurant with a drive-thru. The applicant has determined that the drive-thru use is no longer feasible and they're proposing The applicant has determined that the drive-thru use is no longer feasible, and they're proposing the amendment this evening. So this is the site plan for Calvine Point Shop Six. The project site will be developed with an approximately ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two-square-feet retail building, along with minor parking lot and landscaping improvements. Access to the site will be provided through the existing shopping center driveways on Calvine Road and Elk Grove Floren Road. A combination of glory maple, crepe myrtle, and Chinese pistachio trees, as well as shrubs, will be planted in the parking lot area located in front of the building and to the north of the building. The site plan is consistent with all applicable zoning and development regulations. Here's the architecture for Shop Six. The proposed architecture, proposed building elevations include a variety of colors, materials, and textures to make the building appear at a more human scale. The building will primarily consist of a stucco finish with stone viar columns to break up the facade. Aluminum window storefronts will be located along the northwest and south elevations with metal awnings installed above the storefronts. Multiple plane changes, parapet heights, and design elements are utilized to indicate tenant entry locations. The proposed elevations provide a high-quality materials detailing and color, which are carried to all building elevations. The building elevations for Shop Six are compatible with the existing buildings on-site as well as the surrounding development. So you'll see the image to the right is the existing Shops Five building. Architecturally, they're pretty much the same. So as I mentioned earlier, the two thousand and nineteen amendment changed Shop Six to a drive-thru. The use is no longer meets the developer's operational needs. So with this amendment, staff has determined that the project is consistent with the prior approval building area. The architecture remains consistent with the overall center. Just a quick note, a green sheet was provided to the council prior to the meeting. There is a modification to the language for condition number thirty-five. In terms of CEQA, the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section one-five-three-three-two and one-five-one-six-two. So staff's recommendation is to approve the project, adopting the resolution, approving the project based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the draft resolution, with a quick note of the modification to condition of approval number thirty-five as provided in the green sheet. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up public comment. Actually, does the applicant want to speak at all? Invite you up first.
Just want to say thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and to council members and planning staff for helping us through it all. And if there's any questions, we're here to answer them.
All right, thank you for being here. Now I will open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this. I will close public comment and declare the public hearing is now closed. Any questions, comments? I'll look to the left, looking to the right, none. I'll accept a motion then.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, eight point three.
Eight point three is a public hearing to consider issuance of bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority to support the Montego Falls Project, a TEFFRA hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, and members of the City Council. Josh Tovar, management analyst with the Housing and Public Services Division. Tonight's item is a public hearing required by the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFFRA. TEFFRA requires a public hearing be held by the local governing body, which the project is located, when taxes and bonds are being proposed, and that the elected body approves the proposed financing. The project under consideration is Montego Falls, a one-hundred-and-thirty-two-unit affordable housing multifamily complex located at the corner of White Lock and Bruceville Road. The developer seeks to refinance its existing debt portfolio and apply for new allocations of tax-exempt revenue bonds. In two thousand and eight, the city provided a four-point-one-five-million-dollar loan to support the project's construction. And as part of this refinancing, the developer will repay the city's loan with principal and interest, adding approximately six-point-six million back to the Affordable Housing Fund. The bonds will be issued by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, which is a joint powers authority that acts as a conduit issuer, helping finance locally-approved projects. The bonds will be, will be the responsibility of the developer and paid solely from the revenues pledged by the project. The city will bear no responsibility to repay the bond deadness. The bond offering documents will have clear disclaimers noting that this is not an obligation of the city. Additionally, the city will bear no costs related to the issuance of the proposed debt. And lastly, the project's affordability restrictions will continue to remain in effect as regulated by a governing, by a regulatory agreement, which restricts a hundred percent of the units as affordable, with the exception of one manager's unit. Accordingly, staff's recommendation is that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by C S C D A for the benefit of the Montego Falls Affordable Housing Project. This concludes my presentation, and I would answer any questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and declare that public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? Looking to the left, looking to the right, seeing none?
Move to adopt staff resolution.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Robles, members of the council. I'm Nathan Bagwell, and I serve as your budget manager. I have the privilege this evening of presenting to you the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Before I get started, I do want to give a hearty thank you to our leadership, Jason Bearman, the city manager, and Jackie Guzman, who's our assistant city manager, but also served as our interim finance director for much of the budget development season. Thank you as well to Raj, Vice Neil Prasad, as our new, not interim, our new finance director, and of course, our executive team. There's just too many people to thank, but this is truly a citywide effort, and a big shout-out to my exceptional colleagues, Matthew Ruiz, Estacy Long, and as well as Cindy Vida Montes. Really lucky to have such a great supporting staff and team to work with. So what we're going to talk about tonight is some public outreach efforts over the last year. There are, there is a slight change proposed to the budget since the last time this item was brought to you on May twenty-eighth. We'll do a high-level overview of the capital improvement program. We'll discuss Measure E and the general fund, and we'll talk about the five-year forecast from the budget document, and we'll discuss some of the budget highlights as it relates to some personnel recommendations and some other really exciting work that's happening in the upcoming year. So with regards to public engagement, one of the programs you heard our city manager speak of earlier that we're very proud of is Oak Grove One-O-One. This immersive eight-session course is designed to engage empower and enlighten community members about their local government. The city is holding its third cohort now in the spring, and I've been encouraged to share that applications are now being accepted for the next cohort beginning in August. Additional efforts where finance and budgets had an opportunity to participate was among the, among those were the very popular police department's barbecue series, Barbecue in the Beat. There were also two meetings with the Measure E Oversight Committee during the year. There was a presence at last year's Sunday-Thund Day with the City Council, and as discussed earlier this evening, the city conducted an essay contest amongst the city's high school students, where we extended our reach to potential future civic leaders of tomorrow as well. In November, there was a, Elk Grove One-O-One alumni and climate ambassadors were invited to weigh in on current C I P projects, where they could suggest modifications and propose new projects. Told it was a packed and energized group. Additionally, the city did a lot of outreach with regards to advertising that this message is going out regarding the budget. We get a glance email that budget was highlighted to over two thousand recipients. Budget Department does have its own listserv email that reached over three hundred recipients, and virtually over five thousand folks were reached by Instagram and Facebook, and we anticipate a print media release tomorrow. Also, as part of our outreach was something we did internally. This included talking to our internal stakeholders. So the budget department this year during the winter met with each individual department and the police department, who welcomed us with open arms. This gave us an opportunity to sit down and really connect with those who deliver these great services within the community, and really help us understand our processes and how they relate to collaborating with them. So just wanted to include that this conversation is outward and inward, as well as we always seek to be a city that cares and always improving. So what's changed since May twenty-eighth? There is a slight increase proposed. This is for the general fund of a little under thirty-four thousand dollars. How that's broken out is ten thousand for the city manager's office for access, expanded access to swimming lessons, a little over nine thousand for the public affairs budget. This is regarding expanding the military street banner program. And as discussed earlier tonight, the Lifeline Assistant Program, there's a proposal for fourteen thousand five hundred additional funds to promote that program. So we'll transition now to the capital improvement program. This is a high-level summary. The total planned appropriations over the five-year period is two-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars. Sixty-one percent or a hundred-and-eighty million of all those projects are funded. Thirty-nine percent or a hundred-and-thirteen million are unfunded, with the unfunded portion primarily shown here in this chart as potential grants. You can find a version of this chart on page two ninety of the budget. And to highlight some of the exciting work that's forthcoming, there's a library, city hall remodels, trail improvements, new parks, camera road extension to Bruceville, White Lock interchange. Additionally, there's the Lots Parkway Extension, as well as the citywide traffic signal enhancement and congestion relief project. So transitioning now to do a discussion about Measure E. As you know, that's a one-cent transaction used in sales tax, was approved by voters in two thousand and twenty-two. The Measure E Oversight Committee met in January and again in May, and at the most recent meeting, the committee found that the city and C S D's expenditure plans for the upcoming fiscal year did reflect the needs and priorities identified by the community. We anticipate Measure E to generate thirty-three million dollars in the upcoming year. The city and the C S D have a tax-sharing agreement whereby these funds are broken out accordingly. Twenty percent is set aside for future priority projects. The remainder is broken out, thirty percent goes to the C S D, fifty percent to the city. The city anticipates an allocation of sixteen and a half million dollars in the upcoming fiscal year. At the city, at the council retreat in February, staff presented new community polling results on potential new Measure E priorities. Based on these results, council directed staff to add four new categories eligible for Measure E funding, which are arts, culture, and entertainment, affordable housing, preservation of natural areas and open space, maintaining and expanding local bike and pedestrian trails. And again, these are in addition to the existing priorities that will continue to remain. Measure E revenues have, so what you'll see here, as we mentioned a moment ago, the allocation is anticipated to be sixteen-point-five million dollars. This total spending plan for Measure E is twenty-eight-point-nine million. The delta for that being revenues have come in higher than anticipated since the inception of Measure E, and at the same time, as the city's been working to ramp up new programs, there's been a, and we've been tracking to accumulate a large unrestricted fund balance. So as a result, in the coming fiscal year, the proposed budget includes some one-time expenditures to help draw down some of those funds, which we will discuss momentarily. In the coming year, the city is continuing to support the priorities with some strategic investments. City is also proposing to fund projects in the new community priority areas. And lastly, the city is also setting aside four million dollars from fund balance for Measure E for a permanent shelter facility. Some of the highlights, Measure E is enabling the city to be putting forward new programs, data aggregation and software that will assist with criminal investigations, and this is relative to enhanced policing efforts, additional drones and flock cameras, as well as training for emergency management for staff, and providing security services at warming and cooling centers. Relative to the quality of life here in the city, historic Main Street lighting and safety enhancements, this will, this is for improved safety during evening and nighttime hours. There is a proposed new community event and public art installation, a mural festival, as well as permanent shelter scoping and design, and a middle-income housing initiative, which is, which are programs to improve opportunities for homeownership in the city. For economic development, there are two programs relative to the Chamber of Commerce, one for member sponsorship, and another for a business resource website. There is a proposed property business improvement district for historic Main Street. This is a special assessment district that's designed to generate revenue for a host of activities, which can include marketing, safety, security, cleanliness, maintenance, and capital projects. As we lean into the arts and culture and entertainment, there is an arts and culture, arts and creative economy strategy fund, funded in the, proposed to be funded in the upcoming budget. Additionally, there is a proposed revamp of the city's business license platform. So as we mentioned earlier, some of the, some of the larger projects that Measure E is enabling the city to bring forward, Grantline Business Sewer Park Project. What this is doing is it's designing and constructing critical sewer facilities to prepare three hundred acres of industrial land for economic development. Additionally, pavement rehab on Laguna and Elk Grove Boulevard, Laguna Creek interregional trail crossing at State Route ninety-nine, Elk Grove Boulevard right turn at Arco to Southbound ninety-nine to help with traffic congestion relief there, the Fish Hatchery Site restoration, as well as significant funding towards trails for pavement rehabilitation, wayfinding program implementation, as well as the Laguna Creek Trail Railroad Crossing reconstruction. This brings us now to the general fund component of this discussion. The story of the general fund this year is that it maintains service levels to residents, continued focus on public safety, affordable housing, homelessness, traffic, and economic development. It's a structurally balanced, fiscally sustainable, and provides funding for priority projects. Continues to increase reserves based on our reserve policy. We'll take a look first at the revenue side. These revenues now do not include Measure E, those are budgeted separately. The chart before you is showing our historical growth in revenues over the past few years. We anticipate just over two percent or two-point-three million dollars in revenue growth. The forecast assumes five percent growth on property taxes in the coming year, while we do anticipate sales tax to be flattening out. All other major revenue sources are either staying level or increasing in the coming year. Brings us next to the expenditures. The chart before you shows total general fund spending growing over time through the upcoming fiscal year, where about a five-point-three percent increase is estimated. Compensation costs are projected to increase now by five-point-five million over the current year-end estimate. And so for context, that current year-end estimate does capture savings within the current year. When we look at adopted to adopted, there's actually a smaller delta. That might be more of an apples-to-apples. The adopted budget for the current year, sixty-three million dollars, whereas the proposed budget, sixty-seven million dollars in compensation. That four-million delta includes general salary and benefit increases, the full cost of three positions added during the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, as well as proposing to add two new positions for the upcoming fiscal year, which we will discuss in a few moments. It also reflects negotiated compensation increases for the city's workforce. Spending outside of compensation is anticipated to be relatively flat, only modestly increasing. The overall general fund expenditure budget is ninety-seven-point-four million dollars. So before you is a table from the transmittal letter. Really, the story here, the bottom line, is one of a balanced budget annually with a positive net revenue for the next several years. Both the opportunity reserve and reserve for economic uncertainty are projected to meet their target levels of five and twenty-five percent respectively for all years of the forecast. General fund also contributes to the capital and economic development reserves in all five years, which the trigger for them is once those five and twenty-five, so that thirty percent is, is met, that additional surplus is what's there showing in the transfers to the capital reserve and the economic development. The fiscal plan factors in and withstands key spending assumptions such as new sworn and non-s sworn positions added annually, future impacts from negotiated compensation agreements, as well as the continued practice of transferring out recycling and waste franchise fees to the capital reserve fund, additional payments towards CalPERS unfunded liabilities. All these assumptions result in annual expenditure growth long-term. This concludes our discussion on the general fund, and we will now transition to forecasts of the city's other major funds. So we'll start with transportation and maintenance funds for gas tax. Steady revenues are going to help fund the continued operations and maintenance, which includes preventive maintenance, so think of like gutters, curbs, sidewalks, markings, and potholes, as well as capital projects such as Phase Two of the Old Town Streetscape Project, and the bike and pedestrian, and as well as bike, pedestrian crossing improvements. Senate Bill One Fund Local Streets and Roads, steady revenue growth anticipated throughout the forecast. Majority of the capital project spending in this forecast is relative to pavement rehabilitation, slurry sealing, and resurfacing. Next is our C F D Community Facilities District, two thousand and five dash one, so this is Laguna Bridge. The levy assessed on the properties within this C F D were held at seventy percent of the max allowable amount for many years, subject to only an annual CPI increase. Now that most of the area's amenities are in operation, expenses are now outpacing revenues. So the levy is assumed to increase five percent annually until it reaches the maximum tax in fiscal year twenty-eight. Significant annual expenditure growth is assumed in the forecast, including expenditures for newer parks. So the staff, the city staff is partnering with the C S D and will continue to pursue cost-saving measures to, to decrease the annual projected deficit in this fund. Next up is Measure A. Next up is Measure A Maintenance. So similar to Senate Bill One, steady revenues anticipated throughout the forecast. Most of the forecasted general capital project expenditures are for annual pavement, slurry seal, and resurfacing. The upcoming year also includes pavement maintenance and street striping. New to the budget document this year is a five-year forecast relative to the Wilton Rancheria Fund. For brief context, in two thousand sixteen, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, facilitating mitigation of impacts resulting from the construction of an entertainment facility. The MOU provides financial resources to the community. Per the MOU, over twelve million dollars of one-time or nonrecurring funding has been sent to the city over five annual installments from the start of construction on the casino, concluding in this fiscal year. The annual installments are purposed for roadway expenditures, police equipment, as well as city community facilities. Additionally, per the MOU, four million dollars in annual recurring revenue is sent to the city. Half of that is set, it's a city tax in lieu that can be used for discretionary purposes. The other half is purpose for police code enforcement, road maintenance, and road maintenance. Capital project expenditures in the forecast include projects such as the Cameron Road two lane extension from Bruceville Road to I five, as well as funding for pavement Almost done with the forecast, we're going to move to our enterprise funds. For drainage, modest revenue growth will help sustain a positive fund balance. Capital expenditures significantly higher in the coming year. This is relative to unspent budget in the current year. That's going to roll over. We don't expect those projects to be done in this year, so it'll happen next year. Examples of projects like that are Laguna Creek, White House Creek Multifunctional Corridor Project, pump station improvements phase two, as well as the southeast industrial area storm drain improvements. And the last of our forecasts is relative to recycling and waste funds. These funds pay for residential and commercial waste collection and hauling operations, as well as the special waste collection center SWAC operating costs. The five-year forecast for recycling waste continues to reflect the impacts of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which requires mandatory organics recycling statewide. This bill mandates the city to administer programs like curbside organics collection, inspection, enforcement programs, extensive public education and outreach programs for each of these new programs. There are also ongoing costs associated with compliance and monitoring enforcement and extensive reporting requirements. We bring now to the, to a personnel discussion. There are fourteen new positions proposed in FY twenty-six, eleven of them really new, three are conversions from contracted positions. Two are the, are proposed for animal services. Recall that we did a staffing study for the animal shelter, for animal services some years back, adding some positions annually. This is a continuation of that relative to the event specialists and customer service representative proposed. Two positions in the city manager's office. The first, I meant to mention those animal service positions are funded by general fund. Those are the two. The next, we go to the city manager's office, the Arts and Creative Economy Program Manager. This is relative to leaning into the arts, culture, and entertainment aspect, the promotion within Measure E, but really also in the city. This program manager funded by Measure E is going to program, to lead the programming and, and the work there. As the city has grown, so has the need for our risk management coordination. There is a proposed, a new long-range planning program manager in community development. And then in public works, there's six new positions and three conversions from contract. Management analyst, kind of ties in with fleet maintenance technician, as the city's fleet has grown significantly, so has the investment of the city. This is helping us manage that. There are a couple positions new to, for landscaping, senior maintenance technician and a maintenance specialist. Think of landscaping, the need is growing. This is more specific to our new growth areas. As the city's tree canopy continues to increase, and we continue to develop more open space, a tree and open space coordinator is needed to help coordinate and lead some of that work. And also, we, we mentioned the fleet, the three positions that are being potentially converted, the maintenance technician. This is bringing a street legend and striping work in-house. And the, the two inspector positions are for the engineering services division, supervising construction inspector, and public works inspector. So at the request of city council, staff has developed a new section of the budget document dedicated to the city's efforts addressing homelessness within the city. The city of Elk Grove is committed to serving unsheltered individuals and families while working to protect the health and safety of our communities. This chart highlights the impactful programs and work being done in our community. The city's investment in the upcoming year is over four and a half million dollars. City is setting aside an additional four million dollars from Measure E funding towards a permanent homeless shelter. More information about these programs and efforts can be found beginning on page four of the budget document. Additionally, we wanted to mention the city's efforts relative to getting in front of and being well managed for pension obligations. Over the last decade, the city has sent pers thirteen and a half million dollars towards the prepayments in addition to our regular pers obligations. City's also established a pension trust fund and contributed seven point six million dollars. So the story really is these tools are helping the city manage its pension costs, which we anticipate, we, our pension plans are approximately eighty-six percent funded for twenty-one million dollars over the last ten years. The city's funding level remains within the top ten percent of all CalPERS California agencies. Additionally, funds continue to be set aside, has been budgeted in our forecast, nine hundred thousand dollars. Additional payments are programmed to the current year and in every year of our forecast. So at this time, staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing, consider a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty, the annual appropriations limit, the, an updated investment policy, as well as an updated citywide salary schedule. Council can choose to adopt tonight or continue this assignment, and staff will come back June twenty-fifth. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that thorough presentation. At this time, I will go ahead and declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Mr. Bagwell for answering all my questions. I read through the, the budget and I sent him a number of questions that helped with clarification. So I want to thank the staff for the good work that they have done on that. I do have a couple comments, though. In previous years, I know that you were able to have assistants and that there's a hundred thousand set aside for that. And if you choose not to use an assistant, it's under the city council, that then you can donate that money to nonprofit within our community. My concern in that is that there might be some favoritism, and would it be fair when we have nonprofits that have to go through an application process when we do our CF, our community monies? So I'd like to see that either programmed a different way, or we consider hiring somebody for you all that would be within that budget of a hundred thousand, or roll it over into another fund. I know in recent years, we have grown as a city, and a number, number of years ago, I believe that there was an audit done to determine the number of staff that we would need in each department. And I'm suggesting, as we've continued hiring, that we look at doing another comprehensive audit to make sure that we have the right number of employees that are meeting our needs and are being efficient within that. Then I just do have another comment. The two million dollars that we get from the casino, we might look at, there's some projects that haven't been funded, and it's interesting that this, one student looked at the budget and was suggesting that they were going to work on safety for pedestrians and roads. And we have some projects that could be completed with that. Also, if we hadn't used four point five million on the zoo, we could look at completing those. And it's table three, for instance, sidewalk infill improvement, bike and pedestrian crossing improvements, Laguna Creek Trail Segment Four, Waterman Road to Sierra, to Sierra River Drive, we could get those done, and I know that would benefit all of us in our community. And lastly, for economic development, it looks like there's seven million dollars that are going to be set aside for buying some industrial land. Well, interestingly enough, early on as a city, we had quite a bit of land zoned for industry that was rezoned for other purposes. But I am just wondering, we already own a number of surplus properties. We've recently, as taxpayers, purchased a hundred acres for a zoo. How is it that we're looking to set aside seven million for an industrial, you know, buy industrial land? Should we put that forth to the taxpayers to see if they want to go into the process of purchasing more land? Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final public comment. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. I'll start to the left, questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, but I do want to again also give my thanks and commend staff for their hard work in putting this all together. It's, we've talked about this in the last meeting, I think it's a lot of good news to share for, for our city. We're in a very fortunate position, and I'm, I'm proud to say that, you know, past councils and this council has been very good stewards of, of the public's money, and we continue to make sure our pension obligations are paid for, as well as having healthy reserves, and also having reserves for economic opportunities. So look forward to passing this budget. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish I could say stuff, but Councilmember Sue and I already took everything I was going to say. No, in all seriousness, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the thorough, being thorough on it. I did want to highlight some of the programs that we have, the city council community service grants, which is super vital in our community and it's making impact. Thank you, because there are new nonprofits actually coming out and asking for community funds and are receiving them. And it's good to see that, that we're continuing to invest in these new nonprofits that are around. I also wanted to highlight, let me go to my next slide, because there was a lot of, there's a lot of reading on this one. Wanted to also talk about, for the HR department, thank you for the hiring practices that you've been instilling. We see it, it's reflective of our community, and just super proud to be, for you to be leading that. It's, it's something that we see it as, as we hire new staff. Also happy to see that there is consultants now moving to full-time employees, which is super needed when it comes to processes and everything, so super happy to see that as well. And I think there's a couple more, or maybe one more. Just looking, because all my computers. And excited also to see that we are doing, I think it's called the middle class, middle class. I'm going to butcher this one out. It's on the budget, one second.
This is relative to, I think what you're referring to is the Measure E middle class affordable housing.
Yes. Yeah. It's somewhere on my notes, I was looking for it. And I'm excited to see that, that we are taking a step forward on providing that opportunity for folks. That's something that, as a council, when we were at the retreat, we decided to collectively do that and look forward to invest back in our community. And I'm proud of doing that. And I know Mayor and rest of the council colleagues are really proud of doing that as well, when we're looking at everything that's starting to be super expensive and not even affordable, but we're investing back in our residents and in our future. So thank you for the budget and thank you for balancing it.
Councilmember Brewer, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you, Mr. Bagwell, but I also want to thank Ms. Guzman. I know she's watching at home as she takes care of her new little bundle of joy. But I also want to thank the entire staff for your, for your work, your focus, your transparency with the public, and being able to share how this budget came together and the types of investments that we are doing for the city. And knowing that the capital improvement plan over the next five years is fully cognizant of how that's going to happen. We have, we have a number of things coming along that are in the spirit of infill and, and, and just overall infrastructure investments that are, that are good to have, strong to have, need to have, really. Because as, as Elk Grove continues to grow, and we're creating like a connecting network of trailways and, and, and shopping, retail, it's important that we, that we remain focused on the overall prize of taking care of our residents and doing it in, in a safe, responsible, and transparent manner. It was like I was going through the budget over the weekend and yesterday, but today I was going, as we were, you were doing your presentation, I was going through our investment policy. And everything that we've been doing, especially through our audits that we have been doing over, over the past year, and do it quarterly, you see the, you see the work that we put into it, and I see the work that you and your teams put into it, because having and reaching and meeting compliance and fiscal muster is very important as we put together these numbers for each of our departments, for our hirings and for the programs that we, that we dive into. So I want to thank you for, for, for putting in this extra muscle, this extra elbow grease, because this is something that, that our residents, as we've been hearing over the last twenty-five years, and definitely over the last three years, this is something they've come to know and expect and, and demand of us, is to be, is to be forthright with them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I think most of the juice has been squeezed out of the grape on this one, especially I had, had some longer comments last time. And of course, you know, I align myself with, with my colleagues and what they've, what they've had to say, but I do, I do have just a few more comments. Yesterday was, you know, state of the city, we had a reflection of twenty-five years. Where we are today relative to budget, to our fiscal standing, we're not here by accident. Right? This is intentional. This is twenty-five years of, of council, staff, residents, right, working together to, to continue going true north on where we should be. Sometimes it's not always easy. Sometimes, you know, I, I remember back in the day when we were talking about the, gosh, I just forgot what it's called, where we're, where we're paying the county back.
Revenue neutrality?
Revenue neutrality, thank you. And, you know, there were, there were some kind of scary timelines that we were looking at, you know, about, about ten years or so ago. My point in all of it is, thank you very much to, to everyone on what I consider to be Team Elk Grove, not just council, but staff and, and residents. Good job, Team Elk Grove, because we are truly unique throughout the state. There are many other municipalities who are, who are dealing with some very significant deficits, but we're not here by accident. So thank you very much. Great job by everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for your excellent comments. As I stated yesterday in the state of the city address, the state of our city is strong, and that is reflected in this budget and all of the great work from our staff. So kudos to all of you, shout out to you and Ms. Guzman for your exceptional work getting us here. I really appreciated the expanded public outreach efforts and the creativity involved in that as well. Like Councilmember Spees said, this is, we, this is a blessing that we have, we are in this position to be with a very positive budget and not cutting positions, but expanding positions and programs. That is something that I don't take for granted, as I imagine that darker days perhaps are ahead, but let's celebrate what we do have before us today. Thank you so much for your hard work. All right, with that, I will look for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are on to our next item.
Good evening, Council. Sarah Kirchgessner, Planning Department. The proposed municipal code amendments are a series of city-initiated text amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code. The proposed amendments address changes in state law, principally around the housing development, incorporate best practices, and overall improve the usability and readability of the code. On an ongoing basis, the city identifies potential amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code regulations and packages them for planning commission and city council review and consideration. The last major update was completed in two thousand twenty-two. The amendments tonight consist of revisions to Title Twelve, Title Fourteen, Title Sixteen, Title Twenty-two, Title Twenty-three, as well as a comprehensive well as a comprehensive updating of the term Development Services to Community Development throughout the entire municipal code. The Planning Commission reviewed the item in May and recommended City Council approval 5.0. I'll start with Title 23. These are high-level summary of the changes. So, for Title 22, there are two sets of changes. As I mentioned, a lot of it is related to changes in state law. And these first set are state law changes, including overhauling the permit requirements for all housing development, streamlining provisions as required by state law, updating requirements and standards for density bonus and other developer incentives and concessions, updating development standards for accessory dwelling units and junior ADUs, and updating Planning Commission noticing requirements for zoning amendments consistent with state law. The second set of revisions are those identified by staff as opportunities to improve the code or otherwise address a city objective. These include adding a Planning Commission Term of Service. This will be discussed later as part of Agenda Item 9.2. Modifying the allowed use table and permit requirements for several land use classifications, allowing pool equipment and small accessory structures within street-side yard PUEs in some cases, updating the parking standards to add parking maximums, as well as allowing a process for extended hours of operation for mobile food vendors. Title 22 would comprehensively repeal and replace this title with a new structure and retitle it Land Division. This would clarify the roles and responsibilities of various parties, adding procedures for interpretation and boundary line adjustments. Subdivision design standards would be updated and expanded. Additionally, provisions are added for surveys and monuments, improvement requirements and dedications and reservations. Other amendments include changes to Titles 12, 16, and 14. These include permit requirements for improvements. For Title 16, permit requirements for qualifying housing approvals. In Title 14, it's a narrow change specifically to Chapter 1410 for the irrigation design requirements. And as I mentioned, updating the term Development Services to Community Development through the entire municipal code. The SEQA Environmental Review includes consistency with the general plan and no further environmental review is necessary, subject to relying on the 2019 general plan as well as the final subsequent EIR. Staff's recommendation is to introduce an ordinance finding no further environmental review is required and adopting the proposed amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak on this. I'll close public comment and declare the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion. Yes, questions, comments? All right.
With staff's recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Cindy Tiffany and the Finance and Budget Analyst for the city. And I'm here tonight to present annexations into special task, tax, tax districts. The city currently maintains eight special task tax districts. Annexations into appropriate districts are typically part of the project approval process. Requirements are specific for each project and vary by geographic location and building use within the city. These rates are adjusted annually and once levied, or once annexed into these, they are levied into perpetuity. The project I bring one today is 9200 Survey Road. This is non-residential project. The project scope is 0.82 acres of non-residential area. The annexations required for this project are CFD 2006-1, which is a maintenance service district, and stormwater drainage via Zone 2. As you'll see on the map here, it's located, located on Survey Road, kind of in the industrial area south of Grantline. This concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 103 open and open up public comment opportunity. No one has signed up. I'll close public comment and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 103 is closed. And look for a motion one.
Motion A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of one possible vote. One affirmative vote was cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Looking for motion A2 and A3.
Motion's A2 and A3.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 73 now open and open up public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 73 is now closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of one possible vote, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, one affirmative vote was returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Looking for motion B.
Motion B.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next, 9.1.
And Item 9.1 is going to be a, to receive an update and share the public input opportunity on the inclusive community participation framework.
I thought it was 9.2. I'm sorry. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Okay, so this is brief, I promise. I'm presenting. I'm presenting, it's a, it's a informational piece on a, a new resource that has been created by staff. We call it an inclusive community participation framework. So, what this is, is a work product that's coming out of our Smart Cities Plan. So, you recall that you passed and adopted this plan back in 2022. The plan itself has three guiding pillars. One of the pillars is around proactive engagement. So, this framework really is envisioning a city that does inform its citizens around all functions, actions and processes, that the community understands how and why decisions are being made and weighs in as appropriate, and that staff consult and engage with the community to understand their interests, issues and opinions and perspectives, and then factoring that into the decision. So, this is the, the vision that is laid out in that plan and then in this framework as well. So, how this was created, so we created an internal working group in early 2023 that met eight times. It was interdepartmental. And the focus of that working group initially was really on what is inclusive community participation. I know it's a mouthful. And then why is it important here in Elk Grove? Like, what is this value? So, the framework itself, and I think we started talking about it like a toolkit, but then we realized that the toolkit was going to be very robust and we needed a foundational policy document that really laid out those visions, commitments and goals that we would build on through our processes and practices. And so, what you see here is the Elk Grove City Council vision that I, we believe aligns with this framework. Really, at its core, the framework is a policy document that expresses a renewed commitment on behalf of the city to build trusting relationships with the residents. So, we really, it's a foundational piece and it would affect a lot, it would go across all city departments and divisions and be this sort of guiding foundation. The commitments laid out, there's six commitments laid out in the framework. They're here. They're, I want to say they're not overly ambitious, but it, the devil's in the details and how you do them, but they're all aligned with what, you know, I imagine you guys talk about in your council retreats. You know, we really want to create and sustain and inform the public and community. We really want to seek out an understanding of their perspectives and we will tap into their collective intelligence, you know, as it's appropriate for projects, for guidance. Commitment four, we will ensure transparency in decisions, actions and decision-making processes. We will equip our staff with, to communicate, collaborate and engage effectively. And we will enhance collaboration, communication and cohesiveness within and between city departments, just internally. So, those are the goals. How we would operationalize this framework is really through this toolkit. And the toolkit will have a series of processes and then a lot of resources and training that will be very internally focused, that will help staff who aren't a giant nerd about this, like I am, get more comfortable, right? And, and really be that change management and really have a safe and supportive and informed way to do these more inclusive processes. So, you see just a graphic of what this process would look like, but it has a lot more direction and a lot more resources that are being built in what we call the toolkit. So, what's before you today is really the framework, that foundational piece. So, it's now public on our website. It's brand new. So, we are asking community members to provide input on the city website. So, we're using a new online tool that allows people to comment on the framework itself and then see each other's comments and then react to each other's comments. So, it's a little bit more interactive than just like a static document. Of course, they're also welcome to email me or call me. And if anybody needs hard copies or just really want to dig into this, I'm very excited about this. This is something I love to do. We already started conversations about this. We brought this to the DNI Committee on May 20th. And so, they know about this and they're digging through it as well. I will say the framework is very short. That was something that we strove for. It has eight pages. Brevity was our friend. So, we really wanted it to be something that everyone could be aware of and read and it wasn't, you know, really too much. And so, our next steps, that promotion, really get awareness of this new policy document while it's still draft, so we can build buy-in and refine it as necessary. So, what you see here are a bulleted list of who we plan to reach out to in regards to this, this new document. And then our staff recommendation is that you receive this update, share the opportunity amongst yourselves, with your community and people you talk to, that we will be bringing the revised framework back to you this fall, that will incorporate the changes that we make based on the community's response. It's pretty simple, but I'm excited about it because it is, it's the beginning of a new way of envisioning process here at the city. So, I'm here for it. Any questions? This is what I do other than finance, which I don't do.
All right. Your enthusiasm is obvious.
Yes.
So, great report. And what I love is there's new opportunities of engagement that Elk Grove 101 was a great initiative, just sort of built in a new group of community voices and leaders. So, I'm really excited about how they will continue, the alumnis, to engage with our city. And then I'd be curious to see how we're going to integrate the underrepresented groups because those are, you know, when I was on the school board, those, it's just a harder group to reach.
Yeah.
And so, it's, it's not your traditional, your, you know, eBlasts and websites and things like that. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that as well.
Yes.
I didn't open up public comment. I just started talking. So, I'll open up public comment officially, but nobody has signed up to speak, so I'll close it. Any of my colleagues have questions, comments? Looking to the right? Nope. Nope. Yep, go ahead.
So, I really like this and I'm very excited for you that you're, that you are embarking on this and that you have the, the hands and the ears with, with the DNI Commission and with a lot of the community members who are a part of Elk Grove 101 to be a part of this process. I think to have a fully comprehensive game plan in place, word of mouth will definitely be, will definitely be the coin of the realm on this one, especially given that we have until September to adopt. This gives people ample enough time, whether it be on weekends or on evenings. They can even go online and email you. That's, and that's what I really like about having that hub, is, is giving that full-rounded opportunity for people to access and engage because this is, this is really something special. And thank you for, for working on this.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
One comment.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Sue.
Yeah, just, I go and cut my colleagues' comments. Thank you so much for this work. And I'm, I'm hopeful to, that it's going to be very well received within our community, being able to engage and participate in the public process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. We will go on to our next item, 9.2.
And Item 9.2 is receive information and consider actions of an ordinance which would introduce amendments to our Elk Grove Municipal Code in order to establish terms of service on city boards, commissions and committees, and consider a resolution that would establish four-year terms of service as well as adopting an initial schedule for biennial or every two-year term expirations. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. I do have a brief presentation, as this is an item that came from your February 20th, 2025 retreat. But the presentation kind of goes through the process of just implementing what changes are needed administratively in order to follow some of the policy direction that was provided and give some insights of what we expect to see in the future. So, if you'll indulge me, I'll just pull that up and hop on up to our podium. Here I am again, in another part of the chamber. But this is a presentation with the policy direction. What always happens is we switch tracks and there's always a little bit of an implementation of change. And so, really, that's what this presentation is going to be covering if we do continue with this establishment of four-year terms of service for all of our city boards, commissions and committees. There's an emphasis that I'd like to give this, which is this is for terms of service of four years. And that emphasis is there's no maximum number of terms. And so, that's provided from, you'll see that rise back up in the presentation, but it's also really those elements that we're going to be putting into our Elk Grove Municipal Code, is that these are four-year terms, but no maximum number of terms for our folks that serve. Just as far as the overview, we'll be talking about how this implementation and the timing to establish whenever we have kind of a new policy, there's always kind of that framework of getting into the cycle of how we would implement these terms of service. And then what would we anticipate from just the administrative side of what this process will look like in the future? What things will change? What will stay the same? And where we go from there? And of course, then there's just the actions of making the code changes. Anytime we make a change, there's a little bit of threading the needle to make sure that we go back and provide consistency that's inside of our municipal code. So, terms of service, four-year terms. And again, this direction came from the City Council Retreat in 2025. And this though, again, implementing four-year terms of service, no maximum number of terms. And part of the direction as well was staggering the terms. We didn't want to have all of the seats that we have for all of our committees coming up all at the same time. That concept of staggering is to put that into sequence. So, is staff wrangled with that concept? Part of it is we went back to looking at what is a consistent theme that the council's used to, which is council member district seats, which go and are staggered and they're over four-year terms. And those come back for review and then how to get into that cycle of going through the four-year terms. And so, a lot of what we modeled was actually thinking of these as the seats that come up. And just as in council seats, if for any reason there was ever a vacancy, those seats, when they get filled, it is for the remainder of the term, but it's the office and the seat that stays, that is filled with a vacancy, but then reviewed again on that consistent cycle. And that's what we sought to establish. Another model that we leaned upon, and as you might get into the staff report or into the resolution, there's a lot of wrestling of prepositional phrases and trying to put all these things into words. Sometimes Microsoft found out things really quickly. You just put it into a table and it makes a lot more sense. So, I'm going to hop into that table real quick. And this table is going to be the same demonstration of what's inside the resolution. It comes from our local appointments list that we've been publishing for years from the city of Elk Grove. But to give you a sense, what we're talking about is setting up through the action of the resolution, these initial terms. And so, when we're talking about any of our committees, we are going to be starting this process. And as you'll see, there's going to be a consistent pattern in which we're going to start in February of 2027. So, February of that odd-numbered year is going to be the first time that we're going to review a majority, well, most of the seats. We call it a division in the staff report. If you take all of our committees and commissions, we have 56 seats. And they're all comprised of either five-member boards or five-member boards with two alternates or seven- or a seven-member board, or a 10-member board. Can't just cut them all in half. And so that's where our kind of numbers will switch off. But as you'll see, we number the seats that are on each of our committees. And so really, when we come around to these reviews in 2027, we are going to be going through and reviewing seats for each of our committees. They'll all come up, but it's specific seats that we're going to be talking about up for these reviews. And this pattern will continue consistently through for all of our city commissions and committees. One of the elements that I have up here is just displaying our newest committee. So when we get down to how did we figure out, how are we going to review different seats when everybody got on there all at the same time? I'm just going to hop in time here back to our presentation and get us back to kind of the timeframes and the implementation of how we decided to do these things. So why in February of odd-numbered years? It is purposeful. It is because it is after November of even-numbered years, which of course is when elections are held. It's the element that when we get for the agency, there's always a turning of the page that comes in every election season. And as we've been doing in the past, it's always been a wonderful practice to reach out to all of our committees and commissions to see the desire to serve. It is a turning page. It's time for folks to look ahead into their schedule. And staff felt that this timing of after an election, touching base with spokes, as I'll get into, we have an obligatory obligation to go with the Matty Act in order to check in with all of our appointees as we move forward, is a good time of year to do this, as well as we're done with the election, so we can get down to business of doing administration for what will be pretty big recruitments when these come down the line. We talked about the division of seats. And part of the mentality that was used for deciding which seats would be coming up was to start out with two kind of divisions of criteria, which first was taking the seats that had the longevity, the folks that have been there the longest. Well, they've already been serving extensive terms, so we thought that they'd be eligible to be up for this process as we implemented it. So we'd start with the seats that had been, those appointees that had been around for the longest, where we had ties, such as our Arts and Creative Economy Commission. We just decided to go by alphabetical by last name, would divide them up. It's a process that we've had with, it just seemed to be an even process to do of following a model of what we've done with our local appointments list. So what does this mean for when we implement and how the future goes? So the intent here is having those four-year terms of service per the seat. So when we have the timelines coming up, we will be having a large recruitment advertisement that comes out in that, in the start of our odd-numbered years. But part of what staff envisions is that we would still ask the council for staff to reach out to all of our appointees. We always review all of our appointee lists every December. And it's an opportunity for staff to reach out and find out if there are folks that as they look at the new year commitments that they have, there's that opportunity for folks to say, you know what? I've, I've got a busy schedule ahead of me. I'm not going to be able to serve at the capacity I had before. So what that part of the checking in and going through is the hope is that this process will help us even out the line of not only just having seats coming up for their expirations, but that we can also emphasize those seats that are vacant for folks that are, when they're looking at what are the opportunities that are out there. So continuing our practice of touching base with all appointees, we will not only have kind of an opportunity every two years to basically find out, hey, when we're touching base with everyone, are there any vacancies that come out? And get that kind of economy of scale, because we are going to have all these seats opening up. And I think it's that differentiation between a vacant seat as opposed to a seat that's currently being held by an appointee that's coming up for expiration, might be a differentiation for folks. For this process, we think it's going to assist, though, in the regards of every two years, even though it's expanding our kind of scope of how many seats we're advertising for what's coming up for an expiration. We think it's going to keep our roles of interested folks with applications. Every two years, we're going to get kind of that pool reinvigorated, and I think we'll have opportunities. So when I talk about opportunities and having a pool, I don't expect us to not have vacancies occur throughout the year. So we'll still have the process that we do with our vacancies now. But again, once there's a vacancy that happens kind of in midterm, if someone is appointed, they'd be to the seat. And so that seat would still have an expiration that would come up. So we might have someone that gets appointed. Within a year, they're coming up on the list. But I think it's part of the desire here is to set up that regular review as far as where we go. And the last part of this is if this looks like an acceptable methodology in order for us to kind of implement this change of having these four-year terms of service, the last part is, again, threading the needle into our municipal code. These really are just establishing this concept about terms of service, and there's no maximum number of terms that's reinforced throughout our municipal code. There was an element to our youth commission, which actually had term expirations. So they had term limits, that you couldn't serve any more than two years, two, two-year terms. There is actually a possibility where we could have an aspiring student that starts in their age of 13, and they still could have another year to go, but right now, our code would kick them out. And so staff asked, not only, that's probably if we've got a student that's been around since 2013, and they're hitting up to a fifth year of service, they're usually quite an amenity to have on the youth commission. But as well, that also brings a consistency with the direction to not have these, the maximum number of terms, to have that removed. Of course, our HPC has some elements that talks about terms, and this would just align with that. And then, of course, you just had some actions under, for the planning commission. So these elements, as far as all the changes, they were broadcast out to all of our committees and commissions. It's been part of the city manager's general administrative report from, since the days of our retreat. I did get a couple of comments back, but it was just to see the process. But I think also, this would be a follow-up opportunity for any actions that were taken. I'd reach back out and let people have, all of our sitting appointees have a sense of what the schedule's going to be and when those timelines are going to come forward. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I'll open up public comment. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and open it up for questions, comments from council. I do want to start, I'll just kick off some of the comments. I think you did a really good job capturing our discussions from the retreat and coming up with this sort of schedule so that we weren't having to manage all of these committee appointments all at once. So I think, and then tying it to the election cycle makes sense. So those are my initial comments. And I like how it's, you've aligned the, the youth commission, because we do have someone that is a middle school person. And so, and that would be a disservice. So, so that's, that's great to see. I'll start to the right. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Spies? Councilmember Brewer?
No, great work. But I just want to have one question for clarity. You have a, you have a commissioner who, through midterm of their, of their cycle, resigns. We appoint a new person. Does that person just serve out the remainder term of the individual who had resigned? And then that keep, will that keep them eligible or fresh for their own four years? Or, or will the rules be a little different for that individual?
So as contemplated under what the staff request is, is the individual that would be appointed to that vacancy, that appointment would be to fill out the remainder of the term. That individual holding the, the appointee as that expiration comes up has the opportunity, as any other appointees or any other applicants, to apply, but it still would come up for that expiration. So it would be.
Each commission is at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Looking to the left here, councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, Jason, you always put great thought into your work, and this is no exception. So good work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation, Jason.
All right, that was short and sweet. So I'm looking for motions one and two.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, council comments, reports, future agenda items. Councilmember Spies, anything to report?
Oh, STA tomorrow.
Yep. Councilmember Brewer?
We had our SacRT Board JPA meeting on Monday.
Councilmember Sun?
We had our sanitary district meeting today with Vice Mayor and I. And then SACOG tomorrow will be holding our meeting in our friend Supervisor Rich Desmond's district in Carmichael. Getting a tour from him.
Excellent. SACRT, I also had GSEC board meeting. And I also just want to take this moment to thank the entire team that helped put on the state of the city. Lot of work goes into doing something like that, the planning, the 25th anniversary, not just with my speech and the audio visuals that coincide with it, but just the entire event itself. So thank Kristin, thank you, just thank everybody. There's, there's just so many people. There's probably a dozen or so folks that are involved in this process. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you personally. Thank you. And with that.
Madam Mayor, I would like to bring something.
Yeah, please.
For hopefully, future agenda items. I believe that back in 2017, with everything going on, again, I'm trying to remain, everything that's going on with immigration, I believe that Elk Grove in 2017 participated in the Fuel Network Group. They provided certain funding. And I was wondering if we, if, trying to see how my council colleagues would like to kind of participate in that, hopefully.
I would want more information. I know I participated as a school board member, but not on this council.